All right.
Mike, thank you.
At the link identified in the agenda, email comments sent and received by the link is a city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting will be distributed to city council prior to the meeting. Never will call please.
Mayor Harris.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Present.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
All right, Mr. City Attorney, will you kindly read the closed session items?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item for closed session. Item A is confer with legal confer with real property negotiator pursuant to government code five four nine five six point eight. The property is APN sixty two twenty fifty oh forty located fourteen eighty Williamsburg, Williamsburg Drive, Yuba City, California. APN sixty two twenty two seventy dash ten located at thirty fifty nine Jefferson Avenue, Yuba City, California. APN fifty one dash five sixteen double oh seven located at southwest corner of Darrow Drive and Young's Lane, Yuba City, California. APN sixty one dash sixty dash fifteen located twenty seven sixty one Quell Point Drive, Yuba City, California. The negotiator is Diana Langley, city manager slash executive director. Under the negotiating parties are two to be determined and under negotiations whether to sell the properties and if so, the price and terms of payment. Thank you.
All right, do we have any comments from the public on this? Sure. All right, so now we are going to adjourn to closed session. We'll be back at six o'clock. We'll have the entertainment for you. Get this thing, our meeting started here. It's a regular city council meeting on the Housing Successor Agency. This meeting is being held in the council chambers which are open to, open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be live streamed for public viewing but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Roll call please.
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Present.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
All right, everyone would stand please for the invocation by Councilmember Kirchner. And we have pledge allegiance. I will lead the pledge.
Thank you, please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come before you today in humility and faith. We thank you for all you have given us and the many blessings in our lives. We ask for your guidance and strength. Show us the way and fill us with courage and wisdom. Help us to remember your love and grace and to be faithful in our service to you. Give us the patience and understanding to face life challenges with grace. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, peaceful, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. City Attorney, we have a report on closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you very much. For agenda modifications, item number twelve, which is the host fee agreement with recycling industries, has been pulled from the agenda and continued to the next regular meeting, which will be February twentieth, two weeks from today. Any members of the public wishing to comment on this item today are welcome to address accounts during item number four, which is appearance of interested citizens. We do have a time sensitive item number thirteen, probably no earlier than six fifty PM if we're busy. If not, we'll stop right at six fifty. And moving on to ceremonial presentations, life-saving medal and department spirit award for police officer Stephen Denneef. So I can invite Officer Denneef down along with Chief Baker.
Good evening, everybody. A couple of weeks ago, the department held our annual awards ceremony, and unfortunately, Officer Denneef, who was the recipient of two, two awards, was under the weather and couldn't make it. So the first award we'll be talking about tonight is the Yuba City Police Department's Life Saving Medal. On June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, officers responded to the chef store at seven oh seven Kalusa Avenue. The reporting party stated a female was covered in blood with lacerations on her arms. Officer Denneef, Officer Gonzalez, and Officer Whitney arrived and located the female who was suffering from severe self-inflicted lacerations to both of her wrists and to her neck. The female was bleeding profusely and in need of immediate medical aid if she were to survive. A supervisor described the incident as one of the most disturbing scenes he had ever witnessed. Officer Denneef, Officer Gonzalez, and Officer Whitney maintained their poise and focus as they worked together to apply tourniquets to control the bleeding in both arms. Paramedics arrived and transported the female to Ride Out Hospital and then later to UC Davis Medical Center. Doctors at the hospital confirmed the female would not have survived if it had not been for the life-saving efforts by the officers who first arrived. Without regard to personal safety, Officers Denneef, Gonzalez, and Whitney assisted with saving the life of this female. They are to be commended for their quick action and conscious efforts. Their selfless actions are keeping with the highest standard of public service and bring great credit to themselves and the Yuba City Police Department. It is hereby ordered that Officer Stephen Denneef, Officer Hector Gonzalez, and Officer Nicholas Whitney be awarded the Yuba City Police Department's Life Saving Medal for their actions on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Officer Stephen Denneef joined the Yuba City Police Department on June twenty-second, two thousand nineteen as a police officer. Officer Denneef assumed the assignment of traffic officer December seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. In addition to being a traffic officer, Officer Denneef completed the Drug Recognition Expert Course in twenty twenty-three and is the department's lead trainer for first aid CPR and T triple C. I think that was demonstrated in the last award we talked about. Officer Denneef has earned a reputation of being an approachable officer who is hardworking, fun, and dedicated. Within the Yuba City Police Department, Officer Denneef has earned respect for being one of the most positive, committed, and team-oriented members of our organization. Officer Denneef is always seen with a smile on his face and greets everyone he meets with his signature "What's up, buddy?" Officer Denneef has constantly demonstrated a level of commitment to the organization and goes above and beyond than just doing your job. He is always willing to help anyone and quick to praise others for a job well done. Officer Denneef brightens the mood of anyone he interacts with and has a genuine desire to help others. Officer Denneef not only shows his positivity and compassion for humans, but was credited with the saving of a dog that had overdosed on some narcotics that came from somewhere. During twenty twenty-one, Officer Denneef treated and or trained and completed the motor school to become a motorcycle officer. This school is one of the most difficult and technical schools that a law enforcement officer will encounter in their career. As a result of that, he was the number one student in his class. To be number one in this class is significant because of the great challenge that it is to complete. Officer Denneef's commitment to the values, mission of our department, and support for coworkers, animals, and our community is inspiring and truly completes the spirit of our organization. As such, it is fitting that Officer Denneef received the twenty twenty-three Spirit Award.
So I would like to give, is your family here, Steve? I would like to give them an opportunity to come down for a photo op and also your coworkers. It'd be nice to get everything. This is kind of a big deal.
Come on, guys. Okay.
Not kind of, it is. And motor school is no joke, that's for sure, to be number one, just to pass it is, is good. So if you all have the option, if you want to be in the, am I coming out here? You can do that, but otherwise we'll do that. Would you like counsel or you want to get out of your way?
Everybody in here.
All right, all right. I don't want to force it.
Go ahead.
Oh, good, okay.
I should probably send the friends to show Florida. Austin Thornton left. All right. One, two, three. What's up, buddy?
All right, another hand. We'll move on to item number two, Tenth Street Bridge and the medal, as a Medal of Honor Bridge proclamation, if Mr. Brock Bowen, past commander of VFW post six forty-eight, can come forward. And I even have my glasses on, but thank you. All right. All right, the city of Yuba City proclaiming the Tenth Street Bridge as the Medal of Honor Bridge, whereas the Tenth Street Bridge that separates two cities, the city of Yuba City and the city of Marysville, along with the two counties, the county of Sutter and the county of Yuba, and the Medal of Honor is the highest military award given for valor in combat. The Medal of Honor was created in eighteen sixty-one during the American Civil War. The total number of Medal of Honors awarded since conception are three thousand five hundred and thirty-six, and the total number of Medal of Honors awarded in California are one hundred and eighty. Whereas Mary, Marysville veterans of foreign wars post nine forty-eight wishes to pay tribute to Medal of Honor recipients nationwide, and past commander Brock Bowen wishes to take the lead in making this happen. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, mayor of the city of Yuba City, on behalf of the city council, does hereby proclaim the Tenth Street Bridge to be the Medal of Honor Bridge and hereby encourages the residents and businesses of Yuba City to show their appreciation for sacrifices that Medal of Honor recipients have made in defending our freedoms, to acknowledge their courage, and to show them the honor and support they have earned. Very good, all right.
Very good.
The reason that I chose the bridge for the Medal of Honor was we've already made Marysville City a Purple Heart City. We're in the process of doing the same thing for the city of Yuba City. So did I screw up and say Yuba City twice? City of Marysville was done already. Yuba City is in the process.
Purple Heart Trail.
Do what?
Yuba City is Purple Heart City in the process of being a Purple Heart Trail.
There you go. We did, we did, we did, we did a Purple Heart, we did a Purple Heart City earlier, so yeah. But the reason I chose it is because the, the cities, it comes right up to the city limits, which is the river, and that's the bridge, so I felt that we could give some more credit to our veterans by making the bridge Medal of Honor. And a special thanks to the city of Yuba City because they are very, very veteran-oriented, and I appreciate that, and many of the veterans in the two communities by county appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Item number three is North Valley Passenger Rail Presentation, and Allison, it says Allison's up here, but it looks like Michael is instead, but that's great. Happy to see either one or both of you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Michael Hannibut. I'm with the San Joaquin Regional Rail Commission, and I'll be presenting today on North Valley Rail and just here to provide an update where we are in the planning process of this project. So as a brief overview, my agency, the Regional Rail Commission, we help manage two services, first being the San Joaquin's. Most people know this as the Amtrak service that runs up and down the San Joaquin Valley and over to the Bay Area. That's represented in the orange line here. And we also run a network of throughway buses. You can see in the other colored lines here, one of them running up through and stopping at Marysville as part of our Route Three service, really connecting the whole state through rail and motor coach transit options. The other service that our agency provides is the ACE commuter rail. This is a four times daily commute service from Stockton into San Jose to provide commute service for Valley residents into the job-rich Silicon Valley area. And we also provide special train service for events at Levi Stadium, so football games, bigger concerts, that sort of thing. And Valley Rail, this is a program that we're actually soon to go into construction for, to expand both services of ACE and San Joaquin's, both north and south through the Central Valley, providing many more stations up and down the ninety-nine corridor and up through Sacramento, and then as we'll get into, coming up north through this region here. We've been very successful in getting funding for this project, and like I said, some of the first stations and projects associated with this will be going into construction mid this year. This overall kind of ties in our program of expansion with the state rail network, and there's many projects going on here that I won't dive into just in consideration of time, but we certainly are linking up and making our system an important part of the overall statewide network. So North Valley Rail, a bit of background, we had some initial considerations, discussions pre-pandemic with Buick County, who ended up becoming our partner in this project. Buick County Association of Governments akin to SECOG for our region here, ended up getting a grant awarded through Caltrans for five hundred thousand dollars to start the North Valley strategic planning effort. And we really began that effort and planning process in twenty twenty-one, and been working through, you know, a number of planning and development and modeling considerations, and we're coming again to you tonight to share, we do have a draft, and I'll kind of go into some of the details of what we are planning as part of this expanded service. So again, we, our program is a strategic partnership with BCG, our rail commission as an agency, and the JPA that helps run the San Joaquin service to expand again both ACE and San Joaquin's trains, north from Sacramento as part of our Valley Rail program, all the way up to Chico. And this is important from a rail perspective, given that there's only once daily service from the Amtrak Coast Starlight, which only stops in Chico itself, and it's kind of a late evening or overnight timeframe that it does stop. So proposed stations with this program would be at Plumas Lake, Marysville Yuba City, Gridley, and Chico. Two important connections to consider too is we have a bus connection to, from Oroville into Gridley, as well as a bus connection at the Natoma Station for Sacramento International riders to get to and from our service as well. So what's been completed to date? Again, like I alluded to before, we do have a draft strategic plan that is out for public review right now. You can find that on northvalleyrail.org, and identifies our preferred alignment, station locations, as I mentioned, different track improvements that are needed, timetables and riderships, and all the details that go into and are necessary for this type of effort. We are continuing to work with and coordinate on, with the host railroad, which is Union Pacific, as well as Caltrans, our funding partner in this effort, and we have a key stakeholder list that we will continue to work with as this project progresses as well. So this is, diagram shows kind of an overall service plan, each line representing a round trip, and you can see in this kind of initial service phase that we are finishing the planning efforts for, there'd be four round trips coming up through the northern Sacramento Valley here, and you can see they kind of splay out as they go south, so you can connect to more trains in Stockton. There'd be a BART connection in Union City, and two opportunities to get to Merced to continue further south as well. This represents kind of a timetable or, you know, a travel time diagram for what it would take to get to and from different locations. So again, from end to end, Chico to Midtown, it's about ninety minutes, and it's about half of that from, you know, this location down to Midtown, fairly close to drive time, but then you do have the advantage of not paying for parking or, you know, having to think about a car if that is your end destination. So quickly running through the station sites. At Plumas Lake, we are kind of on the north side of that community, right at Plumas or Barba Road and the Plumas Lake interchange with Highway seventy. This allows not just an opportunity to be kind of centered in that community as there's more development planned to the north side, but also be approximate to the Toyota Amphitheater and Hard Rock Casino Hotel, and we've been in discussions with those entities on how we can help integrate with our operations as well. So getting into what may be most, you know, interesting for folks here tonight, we are again looking at bringing service to Marysville and Yuba City. The tracks happen to be in Marysville, but of course, you know, serving both cities and, and community members here. We're looking at two station sites, one kind of in the center of town and, and one just close to the Yuba River. So our kind of northern option here would be, again, it's up on the railroad levee between the Tenth and Fifth Street Bridge, and it would be what's currently now directly behind the Save Mart Shopping Center area. This is one proposed design, but we do have some options depending on what the host railroad will really look for in terms of a final design. And this is a rendering of what that location could look like, and you could see here it has, this, in this design option would be kind of a side platform. Other options would be either two side platforms or a center platform, and we'll kind of work these details out as it progresses into the environmental phase. It's just a close-up here, you can see if, you know, basically how typical platforms design look, and you have a ramp down to the ground level there. Southern option, we actually kind of came in later to the planning process, but we're encouraged by some discussions with Union Pacific of this potential site and its opportunity to provide maybe a better parking situation and also some enhanced access. So we're carrying both of these locations forward into the next phase, again, environmental review, and so certainly look, look out for kind of how that process works for these two station locations, and we'd certainly, you know, again, invite any comment on the draft plan as well. And briefly, just moving north, Gridley again provides that bus connection to Oroville, given that the rail line continuing north doesn't go through Oroville, and this would be right downtown in Gridley as well. And for Chico, we do also have two station options, both downtown and redevelopment area called Barber Yard, as well as in order to serve and park trains when they're not in use, we would need to build a layover facility, and so there's two options there for that. So again, what's up next? We are, we have the draft strategic plan out now. We really want to encourage and help drive traffic to the northvalleyrail.org website, so please take a look, and there's a way to comment on there as well. The final strategic plan will be adopted by the board at BCG in the next month or so, and from there we'll look to continue to work with our partners, especially Caltrans, in how they kind of foresee the timing on the next steps and ultimate service. So with that, I could take any questions.
You guys good? Go ahead.
Mayor, security services for this, not to besiege my neighbors and cross the river, but the locations you picked at are very highly crime-riddled. Is there any kind of security force that will be at these stations?
Yeah, so we actually, as part of our Valley Rail program, again, the, the expansion that's a bit further south, we have a whole design criteria document that we've developed, and in that is safety and security measures that are a bit more enhanced than a typical, you know, commuter rail station would provide. You know, we, we certainly understand and are familiar with, you know, issues that come about from, from station areas, though we certainly see ourselves as kind of a higher echelon than maybe a typical transit service. So we, we try to and really strive for, you know, a focused security approach in that.
Thank you.
Through the mayor?
Yep.
Exciting stuff, exciting stuff. Between the two options over in Marysville, what's the timeline on your decision on, on which one of those is going to be implemented?
So really, it's kind of further discussions with Union Pacific on maybe some engineering and technical challenges with both. With the north option, there's potential to have more levy and, you know, construction issues there. The south option would have a few more access issues to work out, so a lot of the timing on and working through those technical issues will happen during the environmental review phase, and typically what happens is you, once a draft environmental impact report comes out, then you have maybe a preferred location at that time. So again, we haven't started the environmental process yet, we're just in the strategic plan phase, but that would ultimately come from that process.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, thank you for the presentation. I'm not sure I heard, I mean, in a, in a best-case scenario, when might this all start being available to residents of Yuba City?
Yeah, again, you know, working with Caltrans, a lot of it depends on, you know, funding from our higher, you know, levels of government, but we're anticipating there would be sometime in the early twenty thirties, just based on timing and availability of, you know, crews and construction and what UP ultimately allow for.
The other question I had was, it, it sounds like BCG is taking the lead on the, on the strategic plan?
Correct.
So how do we, how do we interface with them here at the city of Yuba City?
Certainly, we can make those connections for you, but also we have a, actually a strong champion over in Yuba County who sits on the SECOG board, and they are, being on that board is a way to help elevate this project and, or communicate with board members through that entity. You know, we have two stations as part of this program in the SECOG territory, so we would certainly invite, you know, any kind of positive messaging to both entities.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any member of the public wish to comment or have a question? All right. Any member of the public wish to comment or have a question?
Thank you very much. That was, I mean, my question answered was the, the stations and the types and locations in any way that is making sure that if there's any possibility it might compromise the integrity of the levy system, that we address that on the front end as part of the decisions.
Yes, the, the core and the local fellow districts are highly involved.
I can see him sitting right in front of you.
Well, we will certainly be in greater context, engineering moves forward.
Well, definitely exciting. Of course, we wish it would took a year and not 10, but it's, it's going to be, we understand how that happens. You don't turn on a dime in government, that's for sure. But I tell you, it'd sure be nice to just drive over there, get on a train and be in the Bay Area or SFO or something without having to think about it. So, not the Niners though, apparently is what I just said. Thank you very much for both of you for coming up. We really appreciate it. We're excited about it and look forward to hearing more. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we're going on to number four, the appearance of interested citizens. You are all welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes per comment, to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Do we have any comments from the public on anything? Nothing? All right. Moving on to consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Any comments from the public on consent calendar items five through 10? All right. Moving on to number 11, which is the sixth, no, it's the next one. Oh, can we approve the consent calendar, please? I'm rushing through here. Go ahead.
Move to approve consent items five through 10.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Were approved. All right, now we'll move on to 11. Newcombe Ranch Development Agreement, presented by Doug Libby.
So this item, the purpose of it is to consider an amended and restated development agreement for the Newcombe Ranch portion of the Bog Stewart master plan. This agreement will supersede the one that was originally adopted in 2020. A little history, the Bog Stewart master plan was approved and entitlements were approved in December of 2019 and January 2020. Environmental impact report was certified, pre-annexation zoning was set for a portion of the plan, and large and small lot subdivision maps were approved on the Newcombe Ranch area together with the Newcombe Ranch Development Agreement, which we're amending tonight. Fast forward to August of 2021, Sutter Laffco completed annexation proceedings to bring the Newcombe Ranch area into the city limits. Last year, Newcombe Ranch LLC requested city funding support for city impact fee eligible items, we mean infrastructure, associated with Bog Road. And in October of last year, your council initiated the amendment to the Newcombe Ranch Development Agreement to implement language related to financing Bog Road infrastructure and streamlining the development process. January of last month, our planning commission recommended approval of the restated development agreement to your council. So before you is the land use map for Newcombe Ranch, or land use map for the Bog Stewart master plan. Now, the Newcombe Ranch portion of it, you can see kind of a blue dashed line. So this is Highway 99 and Bog Road. If you go south, and it goes along down to Stewart, over, up, kind of notches around, and then up back up to Bog Road. Significant, single-family residential. I would draw your attention to the commercial center at the southeast corner of Highway 99 in Bog, as well as some office uses. Also mentioned neighborhood park, community parks, some high-density residential, and then some open space, which is for the drainage basin. Now, Newcombe Ranch is 161 acres out of the total 741 and a half acre master plan. Now, as I mentioned, two tentative maps were approved, large lot and small lot. The large lot map included 12 large lots. Nine of those were then re-subdivided into small lots for 423 single-family homes. And the small lots are what you see on the right side of your screen. And the impacts for those were analyzed in the adopted environmental impact report. I've showed you this slide before, development agreements. They're something that is allowed specifically in state law. They must address issues beyond standard planning, zoning, and development and design standards. You have a lot of flexibility in what they can include, and so each agreement is unique and must be considered on its own merits. Because it's an agreement, there are responsibilities for each side. So there's deal points for city obligations. The city would commit in this $13 million to impact fee eligible road and wastewater infrastructure. So $9 million for road, $4 million for infrastructure. What we're really talking about is widening Bog Road from Highway 99 to Railroad Avenue, making improvements to the Highway 99 Bog Road intersection, and extending the wastewater trunk line westward. And this is really important because it not only serves this project, but the line will be oversized. And so it'll provide, getting that line closer to being able to connect to the west side of town, which is really needed for the long-term growth of the city. Okay, so for Bog Road corridor improvements, we have four different segments you'll see on the, on the map. And I'm not going to go into great detail of them, but one of the things that's unique about this agreement and different from other development is we sometimes get complaints from the public that when you have a development project proposed, they only have to build their half of the road. Well, through this agreement, we're going to get the entire road constructed, which is, which is kind of a big deal. And so the four segments, the one closest to 99, so from Highway 99 to Ramona Avenue, Bog Road is, under the plan, is looked at as being enlarged to a four-lane arterial. It's important to note that you would see here on the north side of the road, talks about sidewalk existing, barrier curb and gutter existing. So we're not trying to take out people's driveways, land. The developer will be dedicating land on the south side of the road on their property to provide for the widening of the roadway. We go a little bit further to the east, Ramona Avenue to Phillips Road, also a four-lane arterial, similar to the last one, but I'll just mention that on the south side, we're going to have detached sidewalk with a shared path. The segment from Phillips Road to Columbia, this will also be a four-lane arterial with detached path. Now, the easternmost segment, I think this one is as unique and spend a little bit more time talking about it, is this segment is actually within the unincorporated county. There is 60 feet of existing right-of-way in place. And so we are not looking at wanting to take people's front yards. We're looking to work within the existing right-of-way that is out there. And so when we want to make these improvements, we're actually going to have to go to the county and actually apply for an encroachment permit from Sutter County in order to do this work. I will note that in this roadway segment, the left part of the screen being the north part of the road, we're looking at a west, one lane westbound during the segment, a turn lane median, and then two eastbound travel lanes within the 60-foot right-of-way together with a attached sidewalk during that area. Other city obligations is the city agrees to ministerial, and what we mean by that is staff-level approval of certain future development applications. That includes a tentative parcel map for commercial and office-zoned land. So what we're talking about is this property, the southeast corner of Bog and Highway 99, looking at staff-level approvals for development plans for commercial and office-zoned land, as well as development plans for the high-density residential. And that land is located right here. And this isn't as unique as you might think, because in our central city-specific plan, it allows for ministerial approvals of development plans. So this is really kind of just an extension of that to this new master-planned area. The city will support the developer's use of statewide community infrastructure program or skip financing, really not a big deal because the city's already a part of the program. City agrees to review and process a substantial conformance tentative map for the Newcombe Ranch subdivision. What that really means is there may be minor adjustments to the approved tentative maps. It does not increase the number of lots that were originally approved, but just minor adjustments in the subdivision. And so that's actually common and allowed under the State Subdivision Map Act. And then the city agrees to review and process a new tentative map for the Newcombe Ranch project south of Newcombe Ranch Drive to increase the number of residential lots. So the Newcombe Ranch Drive would be this center east-west road. So this portion of the subdivision, they're looking at submitting a new map to the city for consideration. Developer obligations. Design and construct the Phillips Road improvements from Bog Road to Newcombe Ranch Road. We're talking about from Bog Road, the central roadway down to this point here, including wet and dry utilities, so that's $5.9 million. Design and construct the stormwater trunk line from Newcombe Ranch Drive to the detention pond. That's from the center location down to this lot here, $3.3 million. And design and construct the detention pond to accommodate Phase 1 improvements, the outfall from the pond and connection with Gilseizer Slough. This includes both permitting and boring underneath the state highway, $6.9 million. So between the two obligations, you're looking at $16 million for the developer's side, $13 million for the city side. We're almost talking about $30 million of infrastructure, which is really significant for our community. Developer obligation, they will continue to agree and pay for the supplemental neighborhood park fee. They will also provide equipment staging areas at no cost to the city to construct improvements outlined under the city obligations. So what are the benefits to, to the city for this? Well, construction of a consistent, fully-built-out roadway segment, I think, is, is important. Avoiding conflicts of redundant costs associated with sewer line construction, because we're going to lay the infrastructure down at one time. It's going to be oversized for future growth to the west side of town. Backbone infrastructure put in place for commercial and residential properties within the master plan, as well as existing properties located on the north side of Bog Road. It just provides options for, for citizens in the future. Revenue to the city could be increased through new property and sales taxes. It offers new housing opportunities for our community and new commercial areas for the, for the area. As you know, I've been with the city now for almost two years. And one thing I've heard a number of times over the last two years is the desire to see more shopping experiences in the south part of Yuba City. And a project like this can provide for that. Regarding environmental review, as I noted earlier, the city certified an environmental impact report for the Bog Stewart master plan, Newcombe Ranch area, completed what's called project-level environmental analysis. What that means is as long as you develop consistent with the master plan and your entitlements, no further environmental review is necessary, which is pretty significant. The amendments proposed in the development agreement will be consistent with the adopted master plan, adopted zoning standards, as well as the infrastructure plans. All applicable mitigation measures adopted as part of the certified EIR will be implemented on development proposed. And so as a result, no additional environmental review is necessary. State law requires findings be made in order to approve development agreements. These are reflected in the ordinance that is proposed before you tonight. Recommendation: Conduct a public hearing. Introduce an uncodified ordinance of the city council of Yuba City adopting a restated Newcombe Ranch Development Agreement for the Newcombe Ranch portion of the Bog Stewart master plan. There's a lot of accessory parcel numbers there. I will not read to you. And waive the first reading. And so that would conclude my comments. Both Ben Moody and Sean Menard with MHM are also here to answer questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, you have one speaker card, but let me go ahead and do this first. We're going to bang the gavel. And the public hearing for the Newcombe Ranch Development Agreement Amendment is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. I have a speaker card here from Mr. John Teague. Right here, sir, is fine.
Good evening. I've been here several times on this topic. I have a couple of questions that haven't been answered, that I don't think have been answered. My name is John Teague. I live at 999 Stewart Road. I'm on the north side of Stewart Road. My property is immediately adjacent to the development site. More specifically, it is immediately adjacent to what is zoned as R1. I have a couple of questions, and I've been asking these for some seven years now. One of them is, the property immediately R1 to me, I'd asked if that's going to be a single-story residency is put next to me. I've been told that that has gone to the council as a recommendation from Mr. Rodriguez in an email letter. I have been told off the record that that is going to happen. I've been told at the last planning meeting, the comment was made that it was going to be a policy, that that would take place. But there is nothing specific that I can find on record that says the properties R1 immediately adjacent to me will be single-story dwellings like her all the way down the street and mine. So I would like that question answered tonight. The second question I have is an ongoing one. It revolves around the drainage from my property. There was some confusing at the, the planning committee meeting last week or the week before last, where the thought was that the, my drainage actually, or it was the drainage issue from the development onto my property. That's not the issue. The issue is I have historical drainage to the west, to the highway, and the road is higher than my property. The development in the EIR that I read looked at like it had a floor height of about three hut, three feet higher than current elevation. Now, I was told in the planning meeting last week that that has changed and adjusted some. I haven't read what the details of that are. But regardless, my property drains to the west. Historically, it's always drained to the west. And it's looking like this development dams me between the road and the, the new development. So my question tonight is, I have drainage, historical drainage to the west, and is the development going to take care of that drainage? One of the responses I got back a few years ago, which was a confusing one, they made the statement that the drainage would go west and then south, which would go uphill to the street, which it's not going to do. And then it was going to go into a curb and gutter. You're going to have to pump it to get it there. So my drainage, actually, the low spot of my property happens probably four or five trees, rows of trees back. That's where the drainage has continued to go. And I want to make sure that that drainage is taken care of.
Okay, Mr. Teague.
Two questions.
Yeah, thank you for that. Just want to remind you, this is comment period, public comment period, not question and answer. And we have a three-minute limit. And there's a reason for that, because if you have these questions and they're very valid questions, it's going to take you longer than three minutes to have a discussion about it, right? And so we want to be able to give, and staff, I'm sure would like to have time to prepare so they can give you a proper answer, instead of sitting here for three minutes and then shooting off the cuff, right? We want to give you the thorough stuff. So there is, we're going to get you an answer, not prepared to do it tonight unless Sean or Ben want to give any input at all. It might even be the complete answer, but we can get you squared away one way or the other, okay? Set up to have those taken care of.
Okay.
But...
I would be, one comment.
Yeah.
This has been ongoing for me for seven years.
Yeah, got it. Okay. Anybody else want to comment? Anybody else want to comment? Nothing? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Who's? Oh, I'm sorry, Sean. I'll reopen it. Go ahead.
Mayor, member of the council, I'm Sean Menard with MHM hearing. I represent the owners of the property, Newcombe Ranch. We've been working on this project since 2013. We finally got it entitled with a tentative map, and the original DA, but we kept on finding additional, we call them hurdles, to get it to the next level, start construction. About a year ago, a little less than a year ago, we started working with the city on some deal points to make, to address some of these regional benefits that our first house has to build, and so it's becoming so costly to, and this DA, and this restated DA addresses those. And so we'd like to thank you. We've worked diligently to get this DA the way it is, and we look forward to moving to the next step, and hopefully successfully start construction as early as next year, probably late this year, slight chance, but most likely it'd be next year. And there's a question for Mr. Teague on the drainage. We haven't started the design aspect of that. If there is a blockage of drainage, we've done another project, you have to put drainage through to the backs of the lots, but we won't back it up on his property. Ideally, it'd go to the curb and gutter, but if that's not possible, you'll have to come up with some other ideas. But like he said last, when we first started this project, the 100-year floodplain was about three feet higher. Through some remodeling and considerations downstream, they did lower the base flood elevation, so the lots won't be as high as they are today. One other thing, it was mentioned in the DA or Doug's presentation, we're proposing to do a revised tentative map in the southern end. That'd be an opportunity to address Mr. Teague's concern about the two-story house. For what a reason, I don't, I can't recall. I don't believe it got put in the original tentative map approval, so it's not in the original conditions of approval, but when that new map comes back, that can be placed in there. So right now, I don't, again, it's been a while since I've looked at the conditions, so I can't speak if it was in there, but for sure, when the new one comes, it's been pretty good policy by the staff and planning commission to put that condition on, so. If you have any other questions, I'll try to answer them.
No, I think we're good. Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and reclose the public hearing, and back to council for action.
I have a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
First, I'd like to acknowledge the work from the developer and the staff to come together. This is a, I think, as it was mentioned, this isn't typical, this kind of public-private partnership locally, where the developer and the city are working together to provide improved roads, opportunities for housing, much-needed commercial in the southern part of the city, and water and sewer infrastructure, all with the ability to perhaps, as time and economics permit, to continue to provide quality-of-life types of activities and housing for the city. I do want to make a comment. I'm very cognizant about the two-story issue, so I think our staff is well aware of the need to include that, and I, you know, if it's been seven years, hopefully we can get you a better answer as time permits, and I think Mr. Menard talked about that getting on the map. I can't speak to the drainage part, but we've certainly sat in this chambers before and mentioned to staff our desire not to have two-story homes overlooking single-story homes. So there's precedence for taking care of that, and hopefully we can get you something in writing, so you don't have to come back here in seven more years and talk to us again. But really, to me, this is just one of those opportunities that I'm excited about. I know there will be some hurdles as we get through it, but this is a big deal for the city of Uba City, and I just want to thank every, the owners of the property, MHM, and staff as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just to echo my colleague here, Doug, Ben, and Sonny, thank you guys, and Sean, for all the work that's been done. This is key for South Uba City. Doug, as you mentioned, since you've been here two years, we've only been here five We've continually heard that South Uba City fills, I guess the only way to say is, a lack of love, because there hasn't been the development down there, and there hasn't been, as you said in your slide, the potential of a grocery store, or any of the things that we enjoy on the north end of town. So, you know, one thing that, as we worked on this as an ad hoc, the, Bogue is a big deal, because that is the key that opens up everything on the south end of town. And if you've driven on a Bogue down there anytime recent, it's another one of those roads that kind of feels like what Bridge Street felt about a year ago, and man, look at it now, and look at how easy it is to get across town and how it's opening up that development. And I see this corridor right here, the short strip that we're doing in conjunction with the developer, is kind of that momentum that's going to happen down on the south end of town. So it's a lot of money, but that's, you know, we have to invest as a city in our future to get this done, and fully stand behind everything that we've all talked about and pulled together. And all the future things, sir, they'll, we're way back here at the beginning, and as it begins to develop out, they'll get you some answers and they'll figure it out, because the last thing we want to do is really negatively affect your property, so we're very sensitive to that. But right now, we're on the north end of the property, but I know that eventually, I want them to build near your property. What I don't want is for us to have an area at Bogue and Stewart, this kind of, like, and we've shared this before, we don't want it to be the Plumas Lake era, to where it sets down there for 20 years and then suddenly starts growing. We want to see the residents in South Uba City get what they need, have the services they need, and see the growth, because we have people that want to come to our community, and we need to have the housing and the commercial and retail space that they need. So just want to say thank you. I appreciate it, and I know we'll get you your answers.
Action?
Move to accept number 11, Newcombe Ranch Development Agreement Amendment, conduct a public hearing, then introduce an uncodified ordinance of the City Council of the City of Uba City adopting a restated Newcombe Ranch Development Agreement for the Newcombe Ranch portion of the Bogue Stewart master plan, assessor parcels 55-240-011, 55-240-013, 55-240-012, 55-240-015, 55-240-1017, 55-240-016, and 55-240-018, and 55-240-055, and waive the first reading.
Bingo.
Could you repeat that?
Second.
What was the third one? No second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. Item 12, as we previously stated, has been polled. We'll go on to 13, which is pretty close to 650, 656. Public hearing number four for updated of city council member district boundaries for annexed property, presented by city manager Diana Langley.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is your fourth public hearing for this item. You have one more to go after this, in terms of public hearings. So this is related to recent annexations that we've had to the city in the south portion of the city. Again, this is the fourth public hearing, and the mandatory criteria to consider when evaluating expanding the boundary is any annexed property must be added to the nearest existing council district, and no other changes to existing council districts can occur. So the recommendation is Highway 99 is right here, Bogue Road is right here, so areas west of Highway 99 be annexed into District 4, and then the area east of Highway 99 be annexed into District 5. So the recommendation tonight is to conduct a public hearing to receive public input on district boundaries. And again, I know it's in the script, but we do have a phone line that we need to check to see if we have any public comment available. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
None from up here? All right. Let's see here. Public hearing number four for updating of city council member district boundaries for annexed property is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we know if we have anything online?
Is there anyone online? Mr. Mayor, I'm not getting a response from the phone.
Thank you very much. No response from the phones? How about in the room? All right. Hearing no further comment on the issue. I'm closing the public hearing and bringing it back to council. And the action here is information only. We don't do action at this time. Thank you very much, Diana. Number 14, another public hearing for the B Street crosswalk removal at Cooper Avenue.
Good evening. So the item before you is regarding B Street at Cooper Avenue crosswalk removal. So tonight, we're, it's the final step in the process, is part of the California Vehicle Code, to provide public, a notice, and then public hearing regarding the removal. So the item before you is across from Uba City High School. It's this east leg of B at Cooper, so B Street, and so what we have going on is that the Uba City High School has reached out to us and said, hey, there's some confusion, and we think it'd be a better, it'd enhance the safety and traffic flow if we got rid of this crosswalk. There's some confusion going on. So staff went out there, they reviewed it, and agreed, and we also coordinated with Uba City PD Resource Officer. There's just some confusion. When people are crossing at both locations, traffic comes, and then when that clears, they get stuck in the middle, and then as traffic is waiting, people start getting a little squirrely with the vehicles, and you have people crossing at different, at both crosswalks. So it was confirmed from staff that we agree it'd be better to focus them in one leg and then control that one side, and that helps with traffic and the pedestrian crossing. So really, before you, it's an opportunity for the public in the process to coordinate the removal. So the hearing was set for February 6th, at the December 19th meeting. Staff posted, physically posted at the site. As of January 5th, for a minimum of 30 days, no comments were received. And so really, after the public hearing and after council consideration, should it be chosen to be removed? The crosswalk, we'd have staff go out there, we're going to black it out, we'll put some temporary barricades up until we could put some permanent, so we can, until we permanently remove the ADA sidewalk, and then also move the crosswalk flasher to the east, to the intersection with university. And so, but we're looking to implement that change relatively quickly, within the next week or two, whether permitted. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ben. I'll go ahead and open the hearing. The public hearing for B Street crosswalk removal at Cooper Avenue is now open. Is there any member, are there any members of the public who would like to address the council on the issue? If so, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Hearing no further comment on the issue. I'm closing the public hearing, bringing the matter back to council.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Back last year, after I was elected, I went around, and I went to Uba City High School, because this is in my district. I'm actually a neighbor of Uba City High School, and I met with the principal and such. I said, if there's anything you need from the city, let me know, and they reached out, which I was like, great, because I've had to navigate this situation, and talk about squirrely, it's beyond squirrely, the way the kids and their, yeah, kids are, it's one or more kids haven't been clipped, because they don't even look up. They're on their phones, and they go across this crosswalk and cause a huge congestion problem. So I was glad that the high school reached out to me, and then the staff jumped right on it, and thank you so much. I appreciate all that, because I think this will make a big difference in this area. That's all I have to comment.
Definitely seems to make sense. Any other comments or anything? We can move right to the action. Anybody who's interested in doing that?
Move to adopt the resolution eliminating the east crosswalk on B Street at Cooper Avenue.
Thank you very much. And Dave Shaw, Vice Mayor, seconds that. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? We're good. Thank you very much, Ben. Number 15, future agenda items. This is an opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up in the meeting that you would like to have brought back to council at a later date, if any.
I would like to. The, I've been getting some feedback on, because I've been asking a question on the Bridge Street property, that's the big island that's there, and I'd like to have that brought back for some discussion with all of us.
As far as options go.
Yeah, I've had a lot of good ideas from city residents.
Thank you for that. Anything else? How about from the public? John, nothing?
Nothing.
Tony, really?
No.
You guys? So no future ones. We'll start with reports and communications, beginning with city manager.
Yes, thank you. So to address council member Pasquale's request, Ashley Patochnik is actually going to be preparing a presentation to bring to council, most likely at the March, one of the March meetings, related to options for those properties on the north side of Bridge Street. And it's important for us to have direction from the council, because that will then help us determine how to address those properties from a surplus property perspective. In addition, we have a Tierra Buena Community Workshop this Thursday at 6:00 PM at River Valley High School. The area that we're really going to be talking about is related to traffic, is bounded by Jefferson to the north, west of Western Parkway to the west, Highway 20 to the south, and then Harder Parkway to the east, and we really want to focus on, we've heard a lot of traffic concerns within that area, and be able to discuss different options with the participants. Another thing that's exciting, if you drive over on Harder Parkway, you see a lot of construction that's taken place in terms of infrastructure, but then in terms of above-ground, D.R. Horton is expected to complete a couple of their model homes this month, and so it's nice to see those homes being built over there. And then I just also want to acknowledge staff's response during the storms Sunday night into Monday. You know, it takes, takes the entire, you know, the entire city's impacted somehow, whether it's the dispatchers who have a huge call-out volume during that time period, or fire, who I think they put on social media 102 calls for service during a set timeframe, to, you know, police who's responding to the multiple incidents, and then, you know, public works, parks, they had so many issues to address. I just want to say a big thank you to staff for everything that they did during that time. So thank you.
Absolutely. Council member Boom Garden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to echo my appreciation for the hard work of the storm response. As an old fire chief, I turned on the radio, the scanner radio, and it was just amazing to hear the stories, the things that were going on, and, you know, there was some tragedy involved as well, so they're not only dealing with downed trees, but also human life, et cetera. So to me, you know, once again, our city staff stepped up, answered the bell, and did so without any injuries, I think, too, correct? Which is awesome, because that's pretty hazardous out there when that wind was blowing, if anyone was out there. Over the last few weeks, attended the city's strategic plan with the rest of the council and our first-level managers and above. I was very encouraged by the kinds of questions and the participation in that meeting. I feel that our staff, you know, we're a lean and mean city. I know some folks would probably take issue with me saying that, but I truly do believe that, and they're working hard, and, you know, this is our annual opportunity to sit down and sort of map out the future, and it was a good meeting. Attended the Sutter County Children's and Families Commission meeting. This is their 25-year anniversary, and I know Michelle Blake is scheduled to come here in here in the next few months to talk about all the stuff that they're doing over there. It's amazing what they do for the zero-to-five-year-old population within our community. Attended a funding group meeting at Sacramento Area Council of Governments. You know, this is the group that helps to guide decisions for the board, of which the mayor is a member of the board, in regards to how they disperse road and transportation money. There's some changes that are coming, and so we get a seat at the table to help try to guide some of that. Several ad hoc committee meetings, probably the most notable was the one with Habitat for Humanity. Just got an update on some of their projects that they are currently involved with and some potential projects that they're involved with. And, you know, that's another good group that's out there that's trying to provide some housing, of which is desperately needed within our community. And with that, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you, mayor. Been busy the last couple of weeks. I attended the law enforcement, the police promotion swearing-in ceremony at the fairgrounds. And it was, it was nice to see men and women being acknowledged for the work that they do day in and day out to protect our community. With transit, we had our first meeting of the year, which came with the election of officers, and they elected myself as the chair. Thank you, Vice Mayor Shaw, for that. And we also decided to shelf the employee evaluation for the, our new transit director for another six months down the road. Still, he's been here for a full year. I attended my first regional water authority meeting, no portable action on that. It was basically a recap of what they did, what we did over the past year. I attended, including half the town, I attended the ribbon-cutting at the Refuge, which was nice to see that property up and running once again, and we certainly wish them all the success in the world. The council goal-setting, which was very productive, I believe, and it was also a great chance to network with a lot of folks that I haven't met before. But to see us get, come together as a city and set goals and actually take a look at what we talked about last year and where we are achieving those goals was, I thought, was very productive. In addition to that, went to the yearly employees awards dinner, and folks, employees, city employees were acknowledged for their hard work that they do in, for the city, the day in, day out. I would like to echo what was said about the response for the storm the other night. I, you know, I knew it was coming in, but man, I was surprised at the veracity of that, at least on our property. Thankfully, we didn't lose power, but I could just imagine, because I could hear the sirens, the men and women, law enforcement, first responders, I mean, it was all hands on deck. Parks, everybody was out there, and man, they did a heck of a job. So I would like to acknowledge their efforts in keeping the city safe and running. And lastly, I'd like to close by reminding everyone that there, it looks like there's going to be a football game on Sunday, and I will be supporting our local team. And with that, that's all I got.
Thank you, mayor. Now, let's see. Attended Waffle Wednesday this last week. It was very well-attended. Went to the Yuba City PD Awards for 2023. What a great group of people. I know quite a few of them. I'm Uncle Mike to several of them. Yuba City Awards Ceremony was very, very nice. It's nice to be able to celebrate those people. And actually, my next thing about the strategic goal-setting, I've had several of those frontline managers that we've never had attend come up to me at other functions and how appreciative they were of that, to be considered, you know, that, that we would think that much of their input. And I think I stated that when I got up and I had the opportunity to speak. So that, I think we achieved our goal, if anything, that we got out of that. Went to the DBA installation of its new president. She's a really go-getter. I think there's some good things going to be going down on the downtown association that are going to take hold. I don't think she's going to let loose of it. I, too, am on the Habitat Ad Hoc Committee, and I think we are setting the stage for them to do some pretty good things in the community, but at a level that we're comfortable with, that we're going to meet the, our needs as well as their needs. And yesterday, air quality control, we elected a new chair and vice chair, and I couldn't tell you who it was because there were yammerings around, but we have new chairs. The main thing that we did is we went over the mid-year budget review. And your air quality control people are, they're within budget. There's no red flags that have gone up. And with that, conclude my report.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Keep mine brief, as I attended a lot of the same things that have already been reported on. The two most notable things is, as they've already said, our goal-setting with our team at Yuba City. Just appreciate coming in with an open mind, really just the honesty, you know, and encourage that as we go forward because that's, that's the only way we're going to get stronger and better, is if we're just honest and open with each other and have that trust to continue building. The storm, welcome to a mini hurricane. I grew up with those guys, so this was kind of refreshing for me on that front. It's a little wind. Actually got out and drove around town a little bit during it. I know that Chief Alexander would not like to hear that, so sorry, chief. But our team here at Team Yuba City just off the charts with their response that they did. And if I could single out one person, and he knows who he is, but that is the battalion chief that was on that night. Chief Alexander said it best. He was, he was a maestro. He was a conductor from the time it started, getting everything kicked off with all the fire personnel, calling in all of our other city team members and stuff to start meeting the needs of the city. So to that B.C., thank you for your leadership and your years of experience because it really showed that night. And with that, I kick off with committees and everything starting tomorrow, so I'll have more next month.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. I may as well start with what the end to is, just echo for the fifth time, appreciation of us from all the staff. I mean, I, too, could hear the sirens like crazy, even though I was sitting, I was sitting in a dark house. You got lucky there, but that's okay. I mean, they responded really well, handled everything great. And I also appreciate the updates from you and fire chief as well. Diana, thank you very much. I did do the first for January, the mayor time over at 93Q Radio, monthly appearance over there. And I think it went well. Ben Moody and Ashley Patocznik joined, and we had a very good conversation with Fish over there. He's, he's always good people. So at the SASSA meeting, somewhat routine, but we did have some good discussion about some of the challenge faced by that organization, and they're very real challenges. And we, I was very thankful that Megan stepped up and answered, actually asked for and told us what she needed, point-blank. And so we can, we can take that, and of course, it'll be followed up with priorities because in case we can't give her everything she needs, we can at least help prioritize that and make some decisions with that. So they do a really good job, as evidenced by the recent capers with the animal abuse down South County. We had the goal-setting session, as we mentioned, with the E-team mid-managers, first-level supervisors. I, too, appreciate the fact that we went out of our way this time to deliberately invite, I think maybe that means actually require the supervisors to attend for the first time. However, we do value their opinion. I think it showed that. And not only do we want to hear from people that are out there with their boots on the ground, but I think also consider part of the succession planning is they can get, kind of get their feet wet and hear things directly from us when we're not sitting up here wearing ties. It's just a lot better. Hopefully, with time, they'll get more and more comfortable to approach and bring some concerns to us, which is, of course, the intent. Employee awards, as always mentioned, five, 10, 15, 20, 25 years, working for the city. Diana Langley, of course, got the 25 year, one of the 25 years, which is always appreciated and respected. And everybody else, 5, 10, 20, all the way down. But it was, it's very good, very wholesome. I was really happy to be a part of that and see that and see everybody smiling and enjoying each other's company because they do work hard and it is definitely appreciated. So thank you all very much. And unless there's anything further, we will adjourn at 7:20.